Testing one, two, three.
Good evening, everyone. It is now five o'clock and I would like to call this meeting to order.
Make a motion that allows Ms. Torres to participate in this meeting via electronic means.
I'll second that.
Madam Chair, call the roll, please.
Nope.
The clerk, I mean, the clerk, call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morrisburger?
Yeah.
Dr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Bekever?
Here.
Ms. Perrier?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
And Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Yeah.
We will now have a moment of silence. Let us all stand to say the pledge of allegiance. Madam Clerk, we do the roll call of the members. I would like to now make a motion for approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of the agenda as presented.
I second that.
Madam Clerk? All in favor? We will now have comments from the community. Go in the comment section, please state your name and address, and you have three minutes. Mr. Cuomo, do we have anyone with their hands raised?
Now, I do not see anybody at this time, but I'll remind those in attendance in the Zoom meeting to either raise your hand using the raise hand feature on, found on your screen, or to type into the chat that you wish to participate, and you will have three minutes when you're called to the stage. But at this time, there are no hands raised. We can give it a few seconds to see if anybody is attempting to join in. Still no hands raised at this time in the attendee or chat to public comment at this part of the meeting.
All right, thank you. Now, we have an info item, Ms. Ken Powell.
Info action.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Bryant, members of the board, and Dr. Odie. We are very pleased to have with us again this evening, Mr. Wick Knox, representing VMDO Architects to provide information about the reconfiguration project and give the board an opportunity to discuss this and potentially take action regarding this important matter. So happy to turn it over to Mr. Knox.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. I'm going to try to do this with a mask and glasses on and still read that through the fog. But I'm really excited to be here tonight. This feels like the closest we have ever gotten to reconfiguration, is where we are right tonight. So this is exciting. We've got an extremely short show. It's only a few slides longer than the one we did at the retreat back in May. So are you guys ready? I'm kidding, of course, but with that, let's get to it. Next slide, please. So one of the things we've learned in the outreach on this is people don't really know what reconfiguration means, right? You guys have been talking about it for what it seems like an eternity. So we've been trying to distill it down to basically the two things. One, it's about improving our system, right? We want to redistribute the grades across our campuses to make it more effective. And two, it's about improving our facility, redesigning them for a better experience for our students, our teachers, and our community. Next. So we've also tried in the messaging here for the community to kind of bullet point stuff as much as possible. So why reconfiguration and why now? We know these are the right ages to invest in, pre-K and middle school, is when we can have the biggest chance to make a difference. Middle school, the transitions that we have now are extremely disruptive. Middle school is where you get it or you get left behind. Pre-K, we can do so much more if we can consolidate into one campus and it'll give it a chance to expand pre-K like everybody wants to. And that our learning spaces are really reflect a mid-20th century idea of education, and they can be improved in so many ways that improve the specific needs or speak to the specific needs of our learners, our teachers, improve indoor environmental quality, help us with our climate goals, and help us train and attract and retain the best teachers and staff we could have, which we know we need, always need. Next. So why now? Well, our school buildings are frankly obsolete. It's been 47 years since we've done a big new project, and it's also been 13 years since we said we would reconfigure. Time is money. The more we wait on this, the more expensive it gets, especially a project of this size. We know, given the best way to accommodate growth across all nine campuses is to do the reconfiguration. It creates capacity everywhere, and tomorrow is today. The decision that we're going to make tonight keeps us on schedule to achieve reconfiguration by 2026. So it's important to stay on track given that timeline. Next. So when we presented this at the joint meeting with council and board last week, one of the comments that Mayor Walker had when we showed those bullet points is like, where's equity? That should be at the top. And she's right. And equity is a hard thing to put into a bullet point, right? Because it's all-inclusive of everything. And so I thought the best way to address that was to simply answer the question about who this is for, right? So if you look at these graphs moving from left to right, if you look at the racial and ethnic diversity of the city of Charlottesville, according to 1990 census, 2019 census data, 34% of the citizens of Charlottesville are people of color. If you look at pre-K and grades five through eight, those numbers are 84 and 62%, significantly higher than the city and also higher than the Charlottesville school system as a whole. Same thing on socioeconomic diversity. If you look at the same census data, 24% of students of people in Charlottesville are at the poverty level below. Those numbers are 66 and 56% at pre-K and grade eight. So these are exactly the people that we are doing this project for when it comes to equity in our community. Next. So tonight, as a result of this process, I don't think I'm doing that right. Okay. So. So we've been at this, we started really assessing the facilities here in February that we've started this public project process since May. Tonight, we are bringing a recommendation for a specific plan for a redesign of Buford, starting construction in 2023, for a specific plan to have pre-K go to Walker in 2026 when we finish the Buford project, and then a specific plan for a future new early childhood center at Walker. Next. So tonight, what are we deciding? We're really just saying, this is the scope and this is the budget, right? So this is about taking that $50 million placeholder out of the CIP and putting in the recommendation, which is $75 million, starting in FY '24. That's all, that's all we're establishing tonight. We talked about the guardrails in this project, where we've come down to defining what it is. And then next, in March, that second decision point that I've been talking about, that's when we decide are we going to do it or not, right? So by having a scope, a budget, a schedule, we can then keep going with the design and give us something, a more specific proposal, where then in March, we make the big decision. Do we spend the money and go, or do we cancel and not do it? Next. So, and then this is the breakdown of the cost for the schemes that were selected by the community design team. So you can see that's the $75 million for the Phase One and what we would need to do to achieve reconfiguration, and then the early childhood centers, we would look to build as soon as possible in a Phase Two. Next. This needs to be kept in context of what other schools are experiencing. I was having lunch with someone today, they're like, $75 million, why does it cost so much? And if you just look at what other school districts are spending and what schools cost, those are the numbers. So you see people all around us are spending $60 million on an elementary school, $150 million on a high school. It just ranges all over the place, but a lot of other municipalities, cities, and counties in the Commonwealth of Virginia are getting this done and finding ways to fund this. Next. There we go. And then it's important also to keep in mind what the implications of this are, what the tax, we've been talking about this all along, based on the information the city has given us. If we fund this solely through real estate projects, this project, the project where the $75 million budget we're asking to be approved, would require a 5 cent increase in the real estate tax for this project. Or we have that special sales tax, which would allow us to fund this project and early childhood center, and is really something we need to keep our eye on as a really great option for the city. Next. All right, so let's look at the two proposals, starting at Walker. So again, in 2026, when we're finished with the construction at Buford, we would occupy Building A for a temporary home for the preschool. Next. At that point, we would demolish Building C and begin to renovate and repurpose Building B. Next. Into a early childhood center, which would accommodate 18 classrooms and provide the same amount of early childhood instruction that we currently have in the system now, and then an ability to expand in the future. Next. So looking at the plans in a little more detail, this is a roof plan. I'm going to go and cut down into, through the plan layouts. Next. So on the top floor, you can see we purposely look for every opportunity to have classrooms that have a very direct and easy connection to the outside. Children at this age learn through play, and the ability to get directly outside to safe spaces is absolutely crucial to brain and motor skill development at this level. Next, so cutting down another level, entryway off of Rose Hill Drive, and classrooms that would also have direct play space directly off of. Next. So this is when you come in Rose Hill Drive right now, this is what you see. So that's Building C, the gym straight ahead. It's where our buses drop off now for Walker Elementary, and this would be transformed into, next. To this, with a new childhood center. So these are the new renderings. Remember when I was here last, I said these renderings are half-baked. This is the fully baked one. So this is, this is the first time we're showing this, and this represents our final, final amount of work for this phase. So rendering of what that would look like coming off of Rose Hill Drive. Next. And then zooming in a little bit at the entryway to the early childhood center, the two-story building that everybody preferred over three at the other side of the site. Next. And then this is what we call building section, so it's a cutaway looking sideways. On the left side, you can see Building A and the dining, the covered, outdoor dining area, and then you come down the hill. That's the new courtyard space, and then Building D is in the background, and then the new building that connects the two landscapes down to the entryway. Next. So right now, this is that, this is really, you know, you talk to the folks at Walker, this is kind of the heart of the school in terms of where people like to be. So that's Building C straight ahead that would be demolished. We could then connect to Building B up where we can fix some accessibility issues. Those buildings are currently six feet apart, and produce this. Next. A new landscape designed for the specific needs of three and four-year-olds and a very nice protected space. Next. And then this is an interior shot of kind of an art space. This is the connector piece between the renovation of Building B and the new construction that would take place. And I believe that's the last slide I have on Walker. Next. All right, let's go to Buford. So in the foreground in this picture with the white roofs, you can see Smith Aquatic and the Boys and Girls Club, and then Buildings A, B, C, and D. The proposal on the table is to demolish Building D and Building C and do a heavy renovation of A and B to change the current site into something that looks like this. Next. Yeah, so that's the proposal on the table. So that's an expansion and renovation of Building B to make it appropriate size for our fine arcs, heavy renovation of both A and B, and then new construction in the bowl that exists between Smith Aquatic and then the Buford campus now. Next. So this, we've kind of spun around, and now we're looking from the other direction. So this is kind of looking from the southeast back towards, you can see now the Boys and Girls Club and Smith Aquatic are at the top of the page. So again, this is a roof plan, and I'm going to step down and show you how the floor plans are organized. Next. So starting with an upper level, remember, part of this plan was to put a two-story element in the front and really kind of change the look and feel of Buford as you come in from Cherry Avenue. So some academics on the top floor. Let's move down. Next, to the entry level. So you can see the light blue or the core academic classrooms. Red is admin, admin moves up. Purple is the fine arcs, visual informing arcs. Yellow, in this case, is the library, and you can see the way the plan begins to create learning communities. So we take this, you know, this big assembly we're going to have of over 1,000 students and break them down into distinct areas of the school, which is really important for making, making a school of this size work properly for the needs of sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. Let's go down a floor. Next. So this is down at the dining area, and you can see additional classrooms there. We come down into a new entryway, and then we'll step down one more floor to the field level, and then you have the gym and some additional classrooms and some art classrooms that would open up into some exterior space. So let's look at what some of these renderings look like. Next. So this is the entryway, so you can see the new two-story building on the right side of that. Currently, you, where, so you can see that canopy and how all the students are walking towards the kind of center there, that would be the new entryway. So it would be between the old and new construction, very similar to how you go there now. You go and you have to go down these stairs, you know, tough luck if you're in a wheelchair, to get down to the admin and go in. So we want to use the same kind of way of moving, but use the new construction to move through the site and take people into the building where there's elevators and broad stairs and lots of ways to move and navigate the site regardless of your ability, your mobility as an individual. Next. So this is, again, a section looking into that. So this is looking back the other direction. So on the far left is where you would come through. You're looking into the library, which we're going to move full forward in the plan, and then connect the new construction and the old with a skylight to flood it with natural light and create this new circulation space without moving into and through the building in the site to connect down to the lower level. Let's zoom in on this a little bit more. Next. So here's a view on the top floor. So looking straight ahead, that's the entry where you would come in, and you would go to a new admin suite on the left, but this is the common space that would exist, with the library is on the right side, and then academic space on the left, and this is the common space that would exist for the kids, a place to connect all students regardless of what academic you're track, track you're on, to mix the C and D scene and do a lot of things we know are really important at middle school development level. Let's go down one level below. Next. And then so coming down those stairs and down below, so this is the current dining area, again, creating an academic commons and spaces for project-based learning and other things, it really gives some space back to the kids versus what, if you've ever walked through the corridors of Buford now, you know that they are exactly the opposite of this, right? Next. So this is a rendering showing the new space that would exist, what kind of beginning to come down another level from the cafeteria level before you get to the gym. So that's the existing Building A to the right. We would still have the covered outdoor dining space, but a lot nicer outdoor space to accommodate the school. And then stepping down one more time, next. All the way to the field level, and those are the art in the project spaces, which would have big roll-up doors, garage doors, and ability to spill out and break out into outdoor space, which Buford has a lot of right now, and it's just not, it's just not really utilized or configured in great ways. Next. So that is the full presentation. I think I shoved in 240 slides there quickly, and I won't read this, but this is the resolution. There's two, it takes two slots, but we have this as part of the presentation. The resolution references Exhibit A, which is the entire presentation you just saw. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Vice Chair, I have a question. With. Thank you for the presentation, and I watched your presentation on the 15th online. So thank you, Julia, for that. I have two questions. My first question is, we are beginning construction in 2023 to give us enough time to do an RFP and hire a construction company, et cetera, et cetera. Is that correct?
That's correct. So based on the information the city has given us, we don't have, we can't fund this until FY '24, which starts July 1st of '23. So we want to be ready to hit that date and put a shovel in the ground.
Now, my next question is, you spoke of 2026 in your presentation and tonight regarding the pre-K renovations, and we talked about the upper level and what had to be demolished. Is there sufficient space with your demolishing of the two buildings at Walker to accommodate our current preschool? I'm not speaking about expansion, but current preschool, because we would be cycling back people to our home buildings for fifth grade when we finish Buford.
There is enough space, so all of those classrooms could fit into Building A, and there still would be some extra space for either wraparound services or any other support services you would want.
Okay, and I have one more question because it was on the slide tonight, and I may have missed it in your presentation. On Slide 24, it appeared that the buses at Buford were coming on the side that currently, if I'm not mistaken, where the, what is that? The garden is, is that correct?
That is an option. So all of these plans show a new fire lane that runs around the entire site.
Okay.
When you do that, you have the option to have buses load and unload down there, which would be really great, but you don't have to do it. You could still keep buses up at the top where they, where they load and unload now. You have the ability to do either one.
But would it not be safer to do what Slide 24 is indicating?
In some ways it is, because that, if you had a lane, it would probably be gated, and so only buses could go down there. And so you could bring and settle kids in and out, and also the Boys and Girls Club has indicated that they think that's a good idea, too, for bringing people to the lower level, Boys and Girls Club.
I do as well.
So it just gives us more flexibility in how we could use the site.
Thank you, sir. You've answered all of my questions. Good job.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from board members?
So look, I'm just curious, and you know, going through this process, and heavily since the springtime, a lot of meetings, a lot of people you talk to, was there any surprises, you know, that you found going through this process, whether it's input from the public or actually the building itself that you witnessed, you know, that may be different from other projects you worked on around the state and country?
That's a, that's a good question. I think we are always surprised at what we hear. We try to come in with as many open ears as possible and open brains and minds as possible and stuff. I think that the, you know, the first thing that we heard, maybe we shouldn't be surprised about, was that, is this really going to happen? Like, come on, you guys have been talking about this forever. So I was a little worried when I heard that, that there was a lot of cynicism about this, but I was surprised that there's not, that people are really behind this. I kept waiting for more opposition to come out, and maybe it will, but so far, the support has been really strong for the project. And even as we have looked at ways to which, you know, maybe we can still a little less by not renovating this part of the building, or putting that off, people have said, no. So there's been really unified support for the project from everyone we have talked to, regardless of background and race and any type of indicator you can imagine. So that's been very refreshing, and we don't get that in most places we work. So it's good to have that in my hometown.
Any other questions from board members? So at this time, I would like to have a motion to move this presentation by DM DO to City Council.
So we have received this draft resolution, which is what I would propose that we move forward. You guys have that in front of you?
Yes.
So I would move that we approve this resolution. I'm happy to read it, but I'm also, maybe we should just make the motion and then we can read it if there are any questions about that.
I move that we accept the Charlottesville City School reconfiguration resolution as presented.
Second.
Hello?
Yes, Madam Clerk? Take the roll.
Okay, now it's time for the question.
Discussion, in the discussion.
May I ask a question? Is this resolution going to be posted on the web, or do you feel we need to read it for those persons that are listening?
Can we put it up on screen?
You could.
It's part of the presentation, so it's like the last two pages of the presentation.
But there are some people looking, and I just thought it might be advantageous for them to see it or hear it. So now that it's up, they can see it.
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, that I feel I'm very enthusiastic about this, and I feel that the process that VMDO has guided us through has really been comprehensive. You know, I've been at most of the meetings, and I feel like the community, that there's been some movement to this point, and I really feel like what's being presented to us does reflect the wishes of the community. And, and I think our community is realizing that this is the right thing to do and that we very much need this for our kids, that we don't want to shortchange this process. We want to really do it right at this point, and so I'm very excited to move forward and appreciate all the work that's been done.
Mr. Knox suggested that it, from seeing this type of important action taken in other localities, it is best practice to read the motion for the record. So I know it is, it's a, it's a long one, but I understand what he's saying, and I've seen that practice as well.
Care to read?
So following over 13 years of community discussion, the Charlottesville City Schools School Board reaffirms the need to reconfigure the present allocation of grades in the elementary and middle schools and to modernize the facilities on the Walker and Buford campuses in order to further academic and equity goals. Currently, students in CCS transition from six neighborhood elementary schools to Walker Elementary School for grades five and six, and transition again to Buford Middle School for grades seven and eight, before transitioning to Charlottesville High School for grade nine through 12. Pre-K is available to a limited number of income and special needs qualified students within the neighborhood elementary schools. The school board proposes a renovation in addition to Buford Middle School, allowing it to serve a capacity of 1,050 students in grades six through eight. Pre-K will be central. Pre-K will be centralized into one location at the Walker site and fifth grade will move to the existing elementary schools. A plan to explore various design concepts with the citizens of Charlottesville was reviewed with the school board at the May twenty first, twenty twenty one school board retreat and again at a joint work session of the school board and Charlottesville City Council on May twenty sixth, two thousand twenty one. Potential scopes of work were developed and discussed over seven public meetings with the community design team, CDT, and informed by numerous outreach and engagement efforts. The CDT's conceptual design recommendations were presented to a joint work session of the school board and city council on September fifteenth, two thousand twenty one. This recommendation includes grade level reconfiguration achieved by August of two thousand twenty six. Combination of demolition, construction and heavy renovation at Buford, resulting in approximately one hundred and eighty seven thousand square feet and based on the build-in-the-bowl option. Pre-K temporarily occupying building A of Walker in two thousand twenty six. New furniture to accommodate fifth grade students at the elementary schools. A plan for a new early childhood center based on the Rose Hill Drive option to be built on the southern end of the Walker campus that would be executed as soon as funding is available. These recommendations were also presented as exhibit A to the school board as an information action item on September twenty third, two thousand twenty one. Having carefully reviewed the extensive input from the CDT, the design consultant, the MDO, CCS and city staff and the community, we move, I move, the board moves, approved for approval of the recommendation of the CDT as generally described in exhibit A. By approving this motion, the school board approves the following. A proposed scope of work and budget to achieve right reconfiguration by August of two thousand twenty six. A request that the city replace the fifty million dollar reconfiguration placeholder in the capital improvement plan in FY twenty twenty five with a seventy five million dollar total project budget anticipating a construction start in FY twenty twenty four. If the stated reconfiguration is funded solely by real estate taxes, the school board understands this would require a five cent tax increase. Real estate tax increase. A request that the city plan for CIP funding of the early childhood center as soon as possible. I'm sorry, a request that the city plan, plan for CIP funding of the early childhood center as soon as possible with the target date of FY twenty twenty seven.
Thank you, Ms. McKeeber.
Thank you.
Very much. Before we go to the roll call of the vote, Madam Chair, Mrs. Torres, do you have anything you would like to say?
I do, and I hope you guys can hear me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, cool. Thank you, everybody. The MDO, Wick, thank you for that presentation. I want to say that was an excellent addition addressing Mayor Walker's question on equity. I really appreciate that addition to your presentation. As always, your work is excellent. So we are so grateful to have you as partners in moving us forward to this. And as stated, just the, the decade plus of time that this has been a discussion and a desire for Charlottesville City Community. Just so many people have, have put time and effort into this, prior board members, community members, students, families, teachers. So I just want to express my gratitude to them. I'm really excited that we are as close as we are to having a twenty-first century learning space for our kids and a space that our kids deserve. I'm excited to be part of this process and I remain committed to reconfiguration for our students. And I'm sorry I'm not there with you, but I, I want to make sure everybody knows that I fully support this resolution and this motion. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are there any other board members who have comments at this time? Madam Clerk? Please follow the roll.
Yeah, Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morseberger? Yes. Dr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. McKeever?
Yes.
Ms. Purrier?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Thank you so much for your outstanding work. Now, this time we will entertain comments from members of the community. So the school board welcomes all comments. And speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes and please give us state your name and your address. Are there any comments, Mr. Pomo, or any persons in the chat room?
I am looking through right now. We'll give people a couple of seconds to make that known to us by raising their hand in the attendees panel by using the raised hand feature or to type their comment in the chat box. And at this time, I do not see any hands raised or any comments indicating a public comment.
Again, thank you, Ms. Knox, for that great presentation and congratulations. And we are so excited. Congratulations, thank you again. Well, our upcoming meeting will be October the seventh, two thousand twenty one, year five o'clock in the Booker T Reeves Media Center. But then, not if there are no more questions or concerns, the meeting stands adjourned.
Go ahead, Reverend Edwards. Go ahead, Reverend Edwards, because that's, he ran the meeting. That's, look, go ahead.